Thanks, Brian. All right, it's 5:30, so I guess we will get started. So I'll call to order the monthly council meeting of May 20, 2025. We initiated our in-camera discussion earlier at 4:30. It's now 5:30, so we're moving on to planning board. So we will call to order the planning board meeting of May 20, 2025, beginning by motion for members of planning board for approval of the agenda in front of us. Councillor Duran, second councillor Trenton, all members of planning board, if they would say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the agendas presented. We begin each one of our evenings here at City Summerside by acknowledging that the land upon which we gather is unceded Mi'kmaq territory. Abogacy is covered by the historic treaties of peace and friendship, and we pay our respects to the Indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years, past, present, and future. At this time, I'll call for any member of council to declare a conflict of interest with respect to any items on the planning board agenda. Councillor Morrison, your light is on.
I will be sitting out number two.
The mobile, oh, yeah, the number two. So the next item up. The mobile food. Thank you, councillor. Appreciate that. So with that, we'll move on to item two. So councillor Morrison, go to the green room. And as we said, we will get started. All right, at this point, I'll hand it over to our chair of planning board, councillor Duran. Councillor, over to you.
Okay, thank you, your worship. First item on today, or I guess the only one on for planning board, is what we call, I guess, meeting number two of three for a zoning amendment application for 535 Mackenzie Drive. And I will just begin by saying that we did receive a couple of pieces of correspondence today from Cindy Cameron, who also spoke at the first meeting. And I just wanted to let her know and any of the public know that we did receive that and we did send it around to council and to Brian. So that'll be part of the, I guess, the package going forward. So, supporting explanation, the purpose of this zoning bylaw amendment is to amend the existing comprehensive development area, CDA zone, to create a CDA plan overlay that outlines the permitted uses and development standards of the CDA plan, Resort District One and Two. Background, an application was received from Nicole Morrison for a zoning bylaw amendment that affect PID numbers 785386, 445973, 652388, 65326, and 65508, cumulatively known as 535 Mackenzie Drive or Ocean View Resort. The applicant is proposing a CDA plan with two resort districts, Resort District One and Resort District Two, and defines the permitted uses and development standards for each district being proposed. And those development standards and permitted uses are on pages 11 and 12 of this report. In addition to what the applicant is requesting is a general zoning bylaw amendment that will give council the discretion to designate staff as the authority within any comprehensive development area, also outlined on pages 11 and 12. The report, under section 5.7 of the zoning bylaw, when planning board reviews a zoning bylaw amendment, it has to consider the following general criteria as applicable. Under section 8.4 of the Parks and Green Space Plan, the criteria of 2, 3, 5, 7, and 8 must be considered. So, number one, conformity with all requirements of this bylaw. Staff comment, the proposed amendments align with the zoning bylaw. These parcels were rezoned in 2018 as part of the planning staff zoning bylaw review. This included a narrow city parcel, PID number 65508, which is access to the coastline of Bedeck Bay, hence why the city parcel was included in the CDA plan and the proposed amendments. A comprehensive development area, CDA plan, was not included during the 2018 review as the developer slash property owner was still in the planning stages for the overall development. A CDA plan is required for any new development within a CDA zone. The zoning amendments, CDA Plan Resort District, mimics the Connector District, which contains specific uses and regulations to provide staff the direction needed to review and process applications. The proposed uses and development standards for the proposed CDA plan are set out in the amendments. This provides transparency to council and the public as it clearly states what the allowable uses and development standards are. Should the developer wish to change the uses or development standards, should they be approved, the changes would have to follow the same amendment process and be approved by council. Prior to 2018, the property was zoned a combination of service commercial C2, high-density residential R4, and low-density residential R1, R2. The proposed uses, i.e. golf course, would not be permitted in any of the previous zones. In order for the developer slash property owner to apply for a development permit, the developer needs to amend the CDA following the process outlined in section 21.6b of the zoning bylaw. Two, conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment aligns with the official plan. These amendments support the various objectives and policies throughout the official plan that speak to accommodating all housing types, promoting innovative responses to unique development opportunities, and encouraging high-density housing. The proposed uses conform with the general uses listed in table 5.2. Section 5.2.2 Comprehensive Development Areas, CDA, allows council to delegate approval authority to the development officer where appropriate. The amendments do not impact the Parks and Green Space Plan. And then there's an excerpt from section 5.2.2 Comprehensive Development Areas and table 5.2, as referenced above, the special planning and comprehensive development areas. And where they are within the city, there's one in Sloman Park within the city boundary, one in the west end of Mackenzie Drive, and one at the newly formed Connector Districts. And it outlines the opportunities in each of those areas. Is that fair to just summarize with that, or?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'm just wondering about the floating zone.
The floating zone?
Right, in that section 5.2.2. Was there going to be any kind of an explanation to that?
Oh, well, I can, I can, I can read that out if it's helpful.
Why don't you read it?
It's a section that's, why don't I just read it to complete? So everybody's on the same page, and it's a short paragraph, so I'll just read it out. 5.2.2 Comprehensive Development Areas, CDAs. It is council's policy to create a CDA zone to facilitate innovative developments on suitable sites subject to comprehensive development plans being approved in each case. However, developers will have the option of initially outlining their intentions for later phases of development in less detailed concept plans. Generally, council will only zone additional CDA areas on application and not in advance, i.e. a so-called floating zone. It is expected that CDA proposals may flow out of secondary planning, and where appropriate and based on the secondary planning, approval authority may be delegated to the development officer in the bylaw. So I guess the question on the floating zone, it just refers to if council was to zone an additional CDA area in advance, where there's not an application to do so. So that's...
But it says, and I'm sorry, I just want to really understand that, but it doesn't say that it would be through the approval authority may be delegated to the development officer in the bylaw, not to council, but to the development.
And that's what we're sort of talking about for this whole application, right? Is delegating to staff the authority that council would have? Yeah. Does that answer? I'm sort of just answering based on what I'm reading and sort of from the last meeting. But I certainly invite Linda or Aaron to jump in if I'm not providing the right answer. So, number three, suitability of the site for the proposed development. Staff comment, the 105-plus-or-minus-acre site is suitable for development and will be required to be developed as per city bylaws and standards. The site is serviced by private onsite water services and a sewage lift station, which is sufficient for the proposed uses. The Bedeck Bay Boardwalk, 340, follows the coastline on the subject properties. The developer granted the city an easement to install and maintain the boardwalk across the developer's private lands for city residents and visitors to enjoy unobstructed views of Bedeck Bay. Number four, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses. Staff comment, the proposed development in Resort District Number One is exclusively high-density residential, R4, and there is a chart included, a comparison of R4 versus proposed Resort District One on page 13. The surrounding land uses include R4, high-density residential, CO, conservation zone, and SU, special use zone. In other CDA areas, specifically the Connector CDA, the east-west connector, building heights were restricted where the abutting lands were zoned as R1 or R2. The CO and SU-zoned parcels contain wetlands and Summerside's boardwalk. Resort District Number Two contains a range of housing types and a variety of uses associated with a golf course, including restaurants and recreation facilities. The majority of the adjacent properties, north and west of the subject property, are located within the rural municipality of Linkletter. The golf course extends into their jurisdiction. The other properties in Linkletter are used for agricultural purposes or are undeveloped. The existing and proposed uses are compatible with the surrounding land uses. Number five, any comments from residents or other interested persons? Staff comment, a public meeting was held on May 6, 2025. The public meeting notice was advertised in the April 24 edition of The Guardian. Six letters were hand-delivered or emailed to six property owners. Four of the properties notified were owned by the applicant. The applicant, Nicole Morrison, provided an overview of the development, the CDA plan, outlining the intended uses, apartment buildings and golf course with clubhouse, driving range, and accessory buildings associated with the golf course. Cindy Cameron's, from 104 Putter Street, concerns and matters she raised at the public meeting included that the city parcel was included in the proposed amendments, that the development officer would have approval of the developments versus council once the CDA plan is approved, whether there would be any consideration for restricting and the number of stories of an apartment building when it abuts residential properties, should District Two be completed before District One, and the potential traffic impacts and pedestrian safety on Putter Street. Ms. Cameron's property is not located within the notification buffer as her property is located 500-plus meters from the subject property. Mayor and council raised additional concerns regarding project deadlines and penalties for projects not completed on schedule. These concerns are addressed throughout this report. Six, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements. Staff comment, the city's water supply and sewer treatment systems can handle the loading from the proposed zoning amendment, CDA plan, Resort District Number One and Resort District Number Two. The city's water main infrastructure for this development is a 200-millimeter distribution main at the end of Mackenzie Drive. From this point into the resort districts, the water system is a private system owned by the resort. All water that goes into the private system is metered at the entrance. The city's sewer main infrastructure for this development is a 150-millimeter force main that accepts sewage through a metering pit at the end of Mackenzie Drive. The sewer gravity and force main systems in the resort districts are private systems. As the water and sewer systems are private, the owner is required to contract a certified PEI operator to look after the systems. Mackenzie Drive is adequate to accept the traffic from this development. Mackenzie Drive was upgraded in 2015 with a new storm system. The development will be required to provide a designed private storm system to control storm drainage as part of the permitting process. A proposed private street will provide a second access to the site. Comments from the Electrical Utility Power were not available upon the submission of this report. The Bedeck Bay Boardwalk is located on the subject property. The Green Shore Park is accessible by the Bedeck Bay Boardwalk. Parkland dedication is calculating, or is calculated when subdivision of lands is being considered, which is not applicable in this application. Seven, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally. Staff comment, vehicle access from the development is intended to be Mackenzie Drive. The developer is proposing a private street through the developer's land within the community of Linkletter, which will connect from Mackenzie Drive to Bayview Drive. Mackenzie Drive is a local city street designed to allow, and I'm not sure what AADT?
Average annual daily traffic.
Average annual daily traffic of 10,000 vehicles per day. It currently has a measured AADT of 833 vehicles per day. The private street has been designed to a proposed roundabout at the end of the development. There are currently no concrete sidewalks along Mackenzie Drive. The street cross-section has a paved shoulder, which allows for pedestrian use. Putter Street cross-section to follow, and that has been provided to us, and that will be available to public as well, downloadable. The site is also pedestrian-accessible via the Bedeck Bay Boardwalk. Number eight, compatibility of the development with environmental, scenic, and heritage resources. Staff comment, staff have been informed the applicant is in discussions with PEI's Department of Environment, Energy, and Climate Action, EECA, regarding wetland regulations and compensation. While protection and retention of wetlands is always preferred, the responsibility for the decision rests with the Department of EECA. Staff are not aware of any historical or heritage resources on these parcels. If any are located during the construction, the developer is required to report them to the province. Number nine, impacts on city finances and budgets. Staff comment, to date, the city has issued a number of permits on the subject property. The permit value for those building permits is $13.5 million. Number 10, other matters as specified in this bylaw, and there are none. And number 11, other matters as considered relevant. Staff comment, staff appreciates the concerns raised regarding downloading decision-making authority to the development officer for the CDA. This may be perceived as adding additional workload to the development officer and/or council relinquishing control of the developments within the CDA plan. As the proposed amendment includes explicit uses and regulations for the CDA plan, this assures council and residents, any applications for this development area will be reviewed, and the proposed amendments, subject to council's approval, will be applied. If council maintains development authority for this area, staff will still be required to complete the review process in addition to writing staff reports for planning board and council, increasing the workload and time needed to issue a decision on a development permit for this CDA. If council wishes to maintain development authority but otherwise approves the proposed amending bylaw, they can amend the proposed amending bylaw. Council will still have an opportunity for input in certain situations, e.g., variances over 10%, and if the developer wants to amend the CDA further, for example, if they wish to add a use not currently proposed. The proposed zoning amendment outlines the CDA plan. The Resort District CDA plan being considered is much the same as the CDA Connector Zone, where council approved the uses and development standards for each of the corridor zones. The development officer applies the uses and standards when considering a development approval within the CDA corridor zone as it would in any other zone. Under the zoning bylaw, there is no regulations to impose deadlines or penalties on private development. Staff review, city staff supports the proposed zoning amendments for the proposed Resort District CDA plan for PID numbers 785386, 445973, 652388, 65326, and 65508. As per section 5.1.0, Part B 3 of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. And the planning board recommendation, the application received from applicant Nicole Morrison for PID numbers 785386, 445973, 652388, and 65326, and 65508, to amend the city zoning bylaw creating the CDA Plan Resort District One and Two, and council designate the development officer to review and approve developments with the CDA Plan Resort District One and Two be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder from planning board, councillor Adams. Are there any questions from council? Or, yeah, planning board or council as a whole, or comments from staff, or?
I will say that I just wanted to, I did have some concerns about the workload on staff, but when it came back and said that sort of not doing that would, not approving this creates more work than approving it. So that's kind of where I was a little bit hung up, but it was addressed in the report, so. Aaron?
One of the items that was not in at the time was the electrical, and they said they would need to do upgrades at the time. They would get more information about the development. But we can handle the, I'll say, our network can handle the existing growth, but they would need to do some review when they get additional plans, what the actual load or draw would be from a specific development at that perfect time.
Okay, and the other question I had was, I did forward an email earlier today from Cindy Cameron, who I think had a couple of questions or concerns. I replied to her, and I said, this is the day of the meeting, so I might not be able to get the answers to her questions today, but I know I forwarded it to Lyndon Aaron, and if we can... Oh, I can, I can, yeah, I can read that out now. It is fairly short, just, yeah. And a second one came in just before meeting time, but it was more of a... Yeah, I'll read the one from earlier today and still include both. So this is from Cindy Cameron. It's the same Cindy Cameron that had spoke at the previous meeting. Good morning, I'm writing ahead of the planning board meeting this evening. And she just goes on to say she wasn't 100% sure who was on planning board, but she sent it to everyone, and we all got it, so. I never received a copy of what was put before council ahead of the last public meeting. My request for that is below. However, on Friday, I was able to review the meeting package, which contains new-to-me information. As a result of that, I'd like to raise the following. And that is typically what we ask if anyone has concerns at the second meeting, if it's new information, and so this is, so this is part of the regular process. So she has three, three things she wanted to bring up. Number one, is the city planning to subdivide and sell PID 65508? Part of that land is the trail parking lot and part of the trail, and I believe she was referring to the boardwalk, but there is a slim section that runs alongside the land the developer owns. Staff is proposing that a portion of the city's land be rezoned to high-density housing, so presumably the plan is to sell. As you likely know, the developer clear-cut his property recently. The trees he took down are very close to an area with significant bird/squirrel activity, and you can now see through the trees in spots. It looks like he's already cut trees that are on the city's land, frankly. It would be nice to have more of a buffer between the boardwalk and the streams and ponds in that area and the large condo buildings. I don't think the city should sell this land. I also think the city should be very transparent about this, if this is the intention. How are the residents supposed to have meaningful input into these decisions if details like that are buried behind PID numbers? Number two, there is a reference to a Putters cross-section to follow. What does that mean? And of course, that's the graphic that we have this evening. And number three, there's nothing outlined in the materials that speaks to improving pedestrian and cycling safety on Putters Street. I acknowledge that there is a plan to have a private road run roughly parallel to Putters Street, but that private road will be in Linkletter and not in the city. Council will have no control over how wide that road is, what the speed limit will be, whether there will be a sidewalk or active transportation lane, et cetera. If the private road is viewed as more inconvenient or slow, et cetera, then people will choose to travel on Putters Street. I stand by the comments I made at the last meeting. Putters Street is already unsafe and will become much more unsafe if the housing development in particular proceeds without a plan for Putters Street improvements. And that's from Cindy Cameron. And then she sent another one earlier, just this evening before the meeting, just regarding, she was driving and witnessed a lady fall sort of on that uneven curb that's on Putters. Anyway, I sent that around, but...
Okay, I can try and answer those questions if you would.
Sure.
So, on the screen, there is the aerial photography of the area. There's two small or thin blue lines that Linda's highlighted there. That's approximately 50 feet wide. That's a strip of land that goes all the way to Bayview Drive. If you're driving in the current golf course paved road, that's what that is. That strip of land came to the city as part of the transfers of all, I'll say, public right-of-ways at the time. That strip has the current CDA zoning on it. If we go to our zoning map we have now, that's the current brown area, so that was included in that. That's still the city's land for you guys to decide at another time if you choose to use it, sell it, to whatever processes you have now for relinquishing land. It was currently in the CDA zone now. That does not include the parking lot. There's an area over to the right that Linda's pointing to. There's another parcel of land that's the city's. That's not the part that's being before you guys for consideration. So it's that small strip there, and yes, the trail does cut across, I'll say, the midpoint of that area, north and south. So again, that's, that's not my knowledge for sale, and will be, it'll be before you guys. So hopefully that clarifies where that parcel of land is, that strip, and where it came from. The second question was the cross-section, so we want to flick to that. We asked staff to draw up, that's the width of our current streets that have been developed, say, for the last, I'll say, 15-so years. If we, no ditches, that's the width of our street that's paved now. So we had that cross-section looking more like an engineering drawing than a graphic drawing. So typically, you have two, three-meter-wide lanes, and there's 2.5 meters left over. So you could have two cars meeting each other and still have 2.5 meters to the side, which was intended to be an area for pedestrians to walk or a car to park. So in previous staff reports, it would have came through saying there's a paved shoulder for pedestrians to walk on. The existing three meters, two, three-meter lanes, that's what a lot of the other communities that we had in areas that were ditched, that's all you would have had for an asphalt surface. The rest would have been a grass shoulder for people to walk on. So that's why it's referred to as, we have two travel lanes, one each way, plus we have a paved shoulder. We do not mark, in most cases, we do not mark where that center line is. It allows for someone to either park on one side or the other, and cars to... If there's one car parked on the side of the road, two cars could technically still meet in the opposing lane and local streets. That was that cross-section. We're just trying to further explain the, I'll say, the engineering detail that's in a lot of our standards. So that's the second one that we were to bring forward. The third question, I'm trying to think what the third question was.
It was regarding the, nothing outlined in the materials that speaks to improving pedestrian and cycling safety on Putters Street. Yeah.
And that's, we're just trying to show this cross-section exists now, to show there's an area. And I think staff had outlined in the package where a second road was going to come directly from the existing golf course road down to the end of Mackenzie. It's in the, in the package that we can pull up for you, if that was a red line. And one of the, one of the drawings that shows is that, right there, the top of that red line is an existing paved road. We had drive down the golf course now, so the red dotted line, they would bring through to the, and that ends where existing Mackenzie ends now. They wanted to have their own access, north and south, without having to go over on Putters or general public coming to the, from the golf resort or anything else. They still can choose to come through the local streets, but that, in time, will be determined which is more direct or...
So we don't know the standards of what a proposed private street would look like in Linkletter?
Incorrect. And, yeah, I guess, in Linkletter, if it's going to be private, no, but if it's in communities around there, the province has adopted to start and go with wider roads like we have, but there still would be a typical road, would be like the two lanes. But again, it's outside of our jurisdiction, and I can't say what the regulations would be for that development.
Thank you. And is, would it be possible to get that cross-section sort of in a digital format?
Yeah, we have, it's on a PDF.
Follow up with Cindy?
I think Brian has a copy, so we can circulate it to you.
Okay. And, yeah, it looks like a Volvo. Is it a Volvo?
We just said, put a car front and back on, so you realize it was two ways, just to make it somewhat to scale as well, to say that...
Councillor Trenton?
Sure, thanks. I'm curious in terms of the new street. I have a few questions here, but the new street, do we, is that considered a short term? Like, I know they listed the long-term and short-term goals of development. So when the developer comes in for the private street, would that be considered short-term to develop it? Or would that be one of the long-term goals? Do we know?
I can't say for sure without, until we get an actual package brought in for submission for us.
All right, because then that would, I think, would make a difference in terms of traffic, for sure, if you have three streets potentially, right? So, as opposed to two. Now, for District One...
Yeah, they do have facilities on the north end of that property, so I mean, I'm not going to assume, but for their own flow to and from their own facility, they have facilities and buildings at the top end, and they won't have stuff on the south. They've already roughed through this red line road now. So with their last, I'll say, year or two ago, they cleared at the end of Mackenzie. You can see, cleared off into the right. So they've rough cleared the start of this road to go north and south through their property as it was.
Yeah, I would agree. It seems to make sense that the road's going to continue to the new development sooner than later, but I was just curious. In terms of District One, I guess the height of the apartment buildings, that's just, because it's abutting the boardwalk, I'm just curious there if there's, if it's, are we looking at R4, the six stories, or?
It's similar to where the Air Force stands in Resilience City. The height, there is some uses that are...
That's why staff prepared the...
That's why staff prepared the one table in the end. The, the yellow is what's currently allowed in our, in Resilient City. The District One, there's a few, few less things. That's what's allowed in this year to match what their current theme was. Just row house, townhouse, apartment buildings. Wasn't single-family or semis in this area, no group home. So there was less things proposed in the residential section for this development than in the standard existing, or for in the rest of the city.
And then looking at the, the developer's plan, I certainly want to appreciate the easement for the boardwalk. It's created a, I think, the jewel of the city, I think. And I also noted that it's, uh, the development's going further beyond. So if there is the potential in the future to perhaps develop the boardwalk longer, that could be a potential too, even in the link letter perhaps. So that's always been a, a topic of conversation of the actor transportation crew.
I, I think the developer's representative stated at the meeting that there was an openness for the owner to allow that to go through if the city wished to extend the boardwalk to full limits of the property that they own now.
Yeah, I believe that was said too, so I just want to appreciate that and say, I think that's a nice to add on, I guess. Yeah, I guess, oh, I guess traffic counts, I guess, too. Uh, I know there's, we have Mackenzie, but we don't list Putters, I guess, as the other street that you're either going to go on Mackenzie or Putters. So do we have any traffic counts on Putters?
Um, I'm not sure if we have current ones, but if we have, they're used by, um, a vehicle passing over it. And when there was a lot of construction going on, cars were parking or we didn't want to get false readings as far as someone parking there and actually forcing the cars to go around, they're not actually going over it. So now that it's getting more fully developed, we'll add it to our local streets. And we do our locals every second year and our main collectors, uh, art materials every year. So we can add that, but I don't know if we have it, if we would, if we probably would have posted.
Okay, so they probably don't have a traffic count for Putters, I would guess?
If we do have it, I'll, I'll forward it before we...
Before the...
Before the council meeting, but I'll, uh...
That'd be great, yeah.
There's a, as I said, it's, it's a metal device that's mounted to the pavement. And it's by the steel of vehicles going over it. So if someone's either parking beside it, they're forcing them and then they're not actually going over it. We'd be having less traffic than actually maybe going there or, yeah.
It wouldn't be accurate.
It may not be, so that's why we wouldn't want to make sure there's, put it in a area that you're going to have cars going over it, yeah.
Sure, sure. And I'll just, I guess my final point, just in more or less an observation, if I'm looking at the, um, the Putters, uh, I guess, cross-section here, when you're looking at pedestrian and, and cycling safety, et cetera, I mean, there's, if there was a, I guess, a median or something there to protect the pedestrians or the cyclists, that's, uh, that would help. But then if that was there, then you wouldn't have what, uh, right now is, I guess, you could park on either side. So that kind of creates the, the issue. So I think in terms of, although the, the width is there, um, the infrastructure to make sure that it is safe, just, I mean, it isn't there. Like, the width is, but there's not that infrastructure to protect the people that are cycling or walking, so.
It was intended just to provide you the cross-section that's currently, for the last 15 years, that the, I'll say, the newer streets have been built too, because that was where the question came up as far as what does Putters look like. It's the same for, I'll say, St. Clair or Key Avenue, all the ones that have been built in the last, since the standards got revised with no ditches, yeah.
Oh, sure, sure. No, thank you. I think that's it. Thanks.
A couple of questions, counselor. Um, first question's for staff and it's in regards to, I guess, um, number six. It'd be at the top of page seven. Um, the last sentence says parkland dedication is calculated, I think you mean calculated, um, when subdivision of lands is being considered, which is not applicable in this application. Um, in our zoning bylaw, um, you go to the CDA, which is at, uh, page 101. Um, 21.7, an application for a comprehensive development plan, um, shall include the following. B is proposed land uses, including any parkland dedications. And then speaking directly to park levies is 21.8, and it says, "The case of a residential, in the case of a residential subdivision within a CDA", which I see here, unless I've got, my eyes are confusing me, but I see a residential subdivision within a CDA. Park levies shall normally apply as under the Summerside subdivision and site bylaw, site development bylaw. So I don't understand why parkland dedication does not apply in this situation.
Uh, we'll have to take a closer look and get back to you, but if it's mentioning a, specifically a subdivision, the land is not being subdivided, the entire brown area will stay as one land entity and not be subdivided. But maybe we'll have to go back and look at it closer then, but.
Yeah, if you could look, well, at the specific provision where it says again, "In the case of a residential subdivision within a CDA".
And again, that's what we get down to.
"A park levy shall normally apply as under the Summerside subdivision and site development bylaw." I'm just confused as to why that, didn't go back and look. That would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's pretty, like, it's as clear as it can be. It has its own section within the two pages that govern CDAs for us. So if we get an answer for that for the next meeting. So if that's a, an oversight or an error, that would be great, because it would be good to know what the parkland dedication requirements would be. I think to the principle of the parkland dedication, uh, the idea being that when you build residential properties, whether they're within a CDA or not, um, there is a certain, um, contribution to parkland for the public good, for the members of the community who live in those, uh, properties as well as others. So yeah, if you can look at that before it comes to the next council meeting, and that would be helpful. Um, my next question has to go with the applicant and I know Nicole is here. Um, and I didn't understand if, if, if you can answer that, or if it's Nicole I have to ask this question to. But is Nicole Morrison an agent of the property owner? Is the agent of the property owner?
Fill out a designation of agent form to act on the owner's behalf.
Okay, so, okay, to act on the owner's behalf, but, okay, just a question. There were some commitments made at the last meeting. I think the one that stuck out was the green fees were going to be reasonable. I was just wondering if, if Ms. Morrison has the authority to be able to make that determination or if that's a decision for the property owner themselves? And I also wonder why the property owner's not here? Is there, I don't know if Nicole can answer that or if you guys can answer that, but.
Typically, when we have, uh, people filling out a designation of agent, they're here to act and solely as far as the contact and present the information. Sometimes they may or may not be, typically they're not, I haven't seen them once they've assigned a designation of agent to be part of the process. They may obviously follow along, but I can't say, if recall too many that have done a designation of agent and then accompanied the process, but.
Okay, and I guess I, it goes to my next piece here, which, um, I am, I should be so excited that there's a possibility for a golf course in Summerside. It would be absolutely fabulous. And I really sincerely hope this project is successful and happens and opens and it can be that missing piece and it can rebuild the golf course that we used to have here as well as what looks on paper to be a really exciting project. So I really want to be excited by what's in front of us here today. But I really struggle with some previous commitments that have been made to our community, starting in 2005 when this property was purchased and the commitment was to finish the spa, I forget whatever the name was at the time, in 2006. That clearly didn't happen. Um, then in 2014, there were significant design changes. And then the commitment from the owner was to partially open it in 2016. That didn't happen. To fully open in 2017, that didn't happen. There was a promise that there were going to be 140 Chinese visitors to the resort every two weeks. That didn't happen. In 2016, the city gave a loan guarantee when the current owner purchased the golf course from Kern and Briggs. Three years, well, four years later, the golf course closed. In 2019, I think the owner presented a 10-year plan with Sable Arc with a statement that 2020 was going to be the opening date. And that included condos, the golf course, the childcare facility with a $20 million investment. That didn't happen. Um, and so when there is a commitment that it's going to open in 2027, I just wonder, um, it would be really helpful to have the owner here to give us his word. Um, so that it has been 20 years, 20 years next year since the first commitment to finish the first piece of this CDA. And I really worry that as I walk down the boardwalk, or residents walk down the boardwalk right now, past that property with giant piles of rock and stone and shipping containers, um, I think in a lot of ways, we've become desensitized to that space. But if we start following down the boardwalk, I'd have real concerns that i, if this whole area turns into an ongoing, never-ending development zone where nothing actually is developed. So I go back again to the CDA and the purpose of this zone is to facilitate innovative developments for realizing the best use or mixed compatible uses of particular sites. And to me, the word there is realizing, because realizing is actually getting a project done. And I've got half dozen commitments and promises to get a project done and zero projects being done. And we are back here again with another promise to get a project done. And so I'm, that's where I sit here. And I know that is not something that, when I look at this, um, project that's in front of us in terms of what the CDA is, um, I don't have any issues with, um, the staff's review, staff's recommendation with the application of the, um, facts to the factors before us to amend a CDA. Um, and so in that case, with the notation of the issue around, um, parkland dedication, I'd be supportive on that front. But I wonder how many more promises are going to be made without completion and a follow-up? And so that's why I'd asked in the last meeting as to whether or not there are any penalties. And maybe I phrased that wrong or incorrectly. Um, perhaps what I was, should have asked, if there are any ways that we can stagger the approvals so that we can see something completed before the next piece is approved? So we don't have a giant, ongoing construction site that looks like the space does now and lose a significant asset in our community in terms of our waterfront and that boardwalk. Um, and if the developer actually gets it built or gets a piece built or gets one part built, then we can go on to the next part. Um, but I just sit here and, uh, in our seats, wondering how many times... How many times before we go, oh, wait, maybe when they say they're going to finish something, they don't actually mean it? So that's my question for staff, is are there options for us to be able to stagger any of the approvals so that we can see some progress going to the language again that's out in the CDA for realizing, which to me means actually making happen, um, not imagining the best use? So are there ways for us to be able to have some staggered level of approval? Um, or is the application before us right now that everything could be started, but nothing finished?
Um, I'm not aware of any, uh, mechanisms for staggering starts for uses that are within the, I'll say, the approved list. I kind of, after our, our last meeting was circulated, I, uh, video what was going on. No one really is aware as far as, they stated, you know, we're working on the golf course and we want to have these things open in time, the supporting services that were in the overall, um, driving range and in a clubhouse and those sorts of things that were in the package. Um, then when we saw, I saw some last year where there was some holes being reworked on, I'll say, in the old course itself up. Um, the latest video that we saw after the last meeting that was circulated around, to me, it looked like a lot of holes were in progress to be in, built, the new holes as far as. So it appears like they're well underway as far as constructing the 18 holes. And these were other associated services that they wanted to have in place. Was stated by the applicant that they all be ready, that they have the housing, that they have the clubhouse and the driving range in place in the same timeframe as the completion of the golf course. So I figured they were a year away from finishing. Uh, I guess Lynda's got it queued up there now on the screen. The, there's a lot of area that's, a lot of holes are underway. I think when I saw it a year ago, there was two or three up at the north end. But we don't have anything that I'm aware of to stagger approved uses, yeah.
Yeah, that's the question. If there's, like, um, showing the flyover, in, in fact, actually kind of proves my point. Um, because you could, there's a video fly, flying over the Prince Alex Resort Dynasty Spa, Ocean View Spa from 20 years ago. And you could fly it over every single year for the last 20 years. And it would be, there'd be things moving. But there's, there's nothing finished. That's, so that's where I go to just the, if there is, if there is not, if there's no way for us to stagger the approvals, if it's an all or nothing, then, um, that, that's helpful to know.
I, I don't think there's on our, if we have a developer walking in with a field, they want it phase one or two or three. We don't have any mechanisms I'm aware of for, I know we have a couple of developments that are looking forward and they have three phases proposed and which phase they plan on doing or all of it together or, yeah.
Yeah, and often for a development, uh, that we see are developments anywhere, that usually they are phased out because there is financing for the next piece. And for the next piece, and a certain number of, uh, parts of it has to get sold. Yeah, so I'll just sort of leave that. If there are, if there are any ways to do it, then we can think of a ways to do it. If not, then there are not.
Okay, I just, um, want to echo on, on similar comments as the mayor has spoken. I actually find this a little difficult because usually our doors are closed. Um, and I did ask that question. Um, and, and I know that we hear, uh, certainly from our residents with many different opinions and comments, but I echo the same thing. Uh, I would dearly love to see this project completed. I would have, I'm sure many people would have loved to seen it from its get-go, say, in 2005 and onwards, to see something happening that was really transparent, that people could see that there is something happening, there's movement. And yes, we can see things, but, um, and, and I've had, and I know Nicole is here, Ms. Morrison is here, and we've had this conversation on the phone. So I'm reflecting back what I've heard from residents and I'm speaking it. And I know that, you know, i, i, it sounds like a wonderful project as a CDA and that, you know, it will be done in different aspects. But some of the things that concern me is that the approval authority may be delegated to a development officer in the bylaw when we have seen different things unfold that are unfinished. Now, there might have been very important reasons why, but when you're looking at it from the outside, that's not what the residents feel or say or, or have that opinion of. And I know we're not supposed to go by hearsay, but we are the voices of the, the people that elect us. So for me, where the concern is, is, is the changes in the approval of authority. I think that council should always be involved in every aspect and be able to speak on questions that we hear, such as we've heard tonight from Cindy Cameron. The other thing that, uh, you know, over the years, I'm being very honest, residents and people in general have lost trust in seeing, um, this type of, uh, a development, major mega-development happen, such as a spa resort, because they've been waiting. And there has been things that have happened along the way where the golf course was operating and then it was closed. So people lost that opportunity. There was a beautiful restaurant, a high-tachi restaurant, and it opened, had very high-end, and then that was closed. So you can see why people are really wondering, is this going to happen and how long is it going to be? And we, our hope as a city, and I'm, I'm speaking this because we are supposed to represent our residents. I'm not trying to be negative. But, you know, we're hoping for economic development, but as the mayor has pointed out, if this is such an important thing, I would really like that the developer, Mr. Liu, would be here. Because maybe we do have questions and that would just give a, a little bit more, uh, chance to, to find that information out rather than through his representative. Um, the thing that I see and I hear most of all from people is that there are containers of gravel. There's all kinds of unfinished work. There's equipment there, but they don't see maybe, you know, what we see in the drawing. So it's very hard for us to try and explain that to people. So I think for me, what I'm trying to say, when I see things about council not being involved in, in further CDA, that's a concern for me. That's a red flag. And the other thing that I point out, uh, and I've had this on my mind that, you know, on page four, in section three, about the suitability of the site for proposed development, it's 105-plus acres. 105-plus acres suitable for development. But when I look down further about midway in the paragraph on page four, or I'm sorry, is it page four, page six, I believe, "The Bedeck Bay Boardwalk follows the coastline on the subject properties. The developer granted the city an easement to install and maintain boardwalk across the developer's private lands for city residents and visitors to enjoy unobstructed views of Bedeck Bay." That is wonderful. And our residents from all across the city and visitors love that. But we don't have any say whether that change is down the road with the CDA. So those are the kinds of questions that are very, very important to the residents that are, you know, speaking and asking questions. And those are things that I feel like personally, I can't go into something and not know those answers to give people. And I feel very much so that I have to say that tonight. I'm not against the project. I think it sounds amazing. But I'd like to see a bit more timelines on the CDA so that we know that a certain phase is going to be finished and met before another one is entered into. And I'll just close with that.
Okay. Aaron, did you have anything?
I guess it was stated as far as the, I don't anticipate the boardwalk changing through the CDA process as we have an easement in place, but for the existing boardwalks. But again, you have to refer back to your legal counsel. We have an easement for a facility on their land now as far as the breaking of that. So the existing boardwalk is an existing easement that we have now. So I don't envision that changing with the CDA development. The part you mentioned as far as council oversight, the council oversight was in the CDA and picking or approving to allow CD, District One is going to be primarily housing. And if it is housing, it's going to follow our existing, so example, if they want to do an apartment building, council has already dictated what R4 apartment housing should look like in the rest of the city, and this would be the same. How tall it can be, how close it can be from the boundary lines and that sort of things. That's the only thing that staff's going to be reviewing to make sure it matches what you guys have previously approved, what R4 apartments should be throughout the rest of the city. So as far as council is going to come back, we're going to do that review to say, here's this building, it's going to be so many meters from the boundary, and we're going to bring it back in like we would do a normal review for Tom Jones's apartment building. And we're going to bring this specific one back just to say this matches the existing. That's the only step that we're trying to avoid here to say, bring the set back and stuff back for council's approval versus staff doing it for the rest of the building. So just to make sure we're clear on what that, I forget what the proper word was, they're relinquishing of duty there or reassigning to staff level. That's what you assign to staff and the rest of the R4. As we mentioned to the mayor, we don't have a schedule built into any properties to say this has to be done at this pace or whatever you want, any other developments. So we can't make that in this either. But I'm just going to answer a couple of things.
No, and I appreciate that. If I may just enter one rebuttal point. As I say, I'm not against the project. It sounds amazing. But what I'm trying to say is that we're sitting in a completely different seat than staff. We're hearing from residents. And I think the residents would love to see this operating and come to completion. But I think what has happened is we're moving into certain phases. But the one that we had hoped for in this whole project of a resort was back 2005 and onward. And I think as the mayor very carefully pointed out in the dates and times and years, I think that there is a residue of opinions out there where people are losing trust that that's going to happen. And I mean that not in a disrespectful way, but we hear that from people. So we're in that kind of a seat where we have to ask those questions and make those points because we're hearing them.
And I didn't take it to be your questions. I just answered them. So if you were the citizen that asked you the same question, the same answer would go to.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so, Councilor Cameron.
Last minute, sorry. I think I asked this question last time, and I just, I want to make sure that I completely understand going forward, that we're looking at two different zones here for two different development standards, correct? That's kind of why we're looking at two. If, if there weren't two zones and it was still as one zone, the projects that are being proposed, could they still go ahead as proposed? Like the condo buildings, could they still go ahead in that CDA without it being divided into two zones?
I would think the developer will want comfort in knowing that if they, if they build, if they build the condos, they would want to continue the work on the golf course. So the golf course is a timeline of two years, probably the condos would be as well. So it may actually prolong project deadlines if we provide approval for just District One. So they might, that could be a two-year build. Then we're going to wait, then we don't do anything on the golf course. The golf course sits in the meantime. Then we've got to wait two more years for the golf course to possibly be completed. So it may actually extend our.
So by not creating, I want to make sure I'm wording this right before I put too many negatives in there. If we do not create two zones, it could, they could still do all the things that are being proposed, but it could extend that timeline to take longer to complete than if you had the two zones?
I think we're saying phasing it as far as District One and District Two, but yeah, we're trying to create two zones to say for some clarity amongst people to realize in that Section One, there'll only be those uses that are listed will just be housing. What's closest to the existing end of the street will be housing. The rest of it will be, I'll say, golf course, resort type of facilities to accommodate in the rest of the area. See, they had originally a CDA, but they still need to come forward with a plan to say, in broader terms, here is, now we're more defined what we want to put there. That's the overall concept plan that's bringing back. So we divided that into two to say this part's housing and this part is the rest of the entity.
Right. And I understand that. But if we did not have those two distinct zones that we're looking at right now, could, you know, the spa's there, the golf course is there, could they still build condo buildings? Could they still do all the things that are being suggested into two separate zones but in one?
I think they could do it in one. They would still have to come through the same process though to get it approved.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, that obviously I think it would be a little bit more difficult to.
And I think the uses also are very different. So you got a restaurant, hotel, golf course. So we didn't, we didn't want to lump them in as one either. We didn't want to see them lumped as one.
Yep. That makes, that makes sense. My second question, and I think we've all kind of talked about it, and maybe it's too, I don't think it is too late to now, but like going forward, is there something that we could do as a council to say when we enter into agreements for development, for people to sign something that is a three-year, five-year, seven-year, to say that they will complete a project in that time with certain, I don't know, consequences if they're not completed in that time? Is that something that is like within our power as a council to do that within the city?
We would have to research if that's something like, something like that exists in other municipalities as far as common practice. And the challenge, I guess, would, one is it take it longer? And the second would be things that may come up that are out of their control as far as materials or labor, labor shortages or, you know, maybe other things that would be built into that as well.
Yeah, which I think is very fair. Like if you were building something in 2020 when the pandemic happened, you couldn't get anything, then, you know, that obviously plays a factor into things. But it seems like we're looking at this saying that it's been going on for so long, but perhaps that is also partially our fault for not creating these timelines that people could follow, but also that, I guess, the city's never really had a 20-plus year project going on either. So, but I think that's a little food for thought for us as council to think about, that perhaps we should be looking at agreements of timelines of people finishing things so that we don't in the future maybe run into this problem that we are looking at now.
Just to add to that particular comment and the one the mayor made, it's, from what I understand, from a zoning perspective, it's not something we can include conditions to. But when it gets to the building permit stage, there's the potential for adding conditions through a development agreement where timelines can be imposed. But it wouldn't be part of this particular process. It would be part of a building permit. And sometimes, as Aaron can attest to, building permits come in in stages and they are staggered. And as a result, conditions can be imposed that way as well. So that's something staff can research, but it wouldn't necessarily be part of this process. It would be part of the building permit process.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's where I was going with it. Maybe I wasn't clear because I was getting myself a little confused too. But that is where I was going with it. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a question. Again, back to the CDA, the section that outlines the CDA. It's 21-6, Sub C, notwithstanding A and B above. Developments phased over a period of time, council may initially approve a general concept plan for the entire site and then may approve a more detailed, comprehensive development plan for each separate phase of the development, which shall each be required to follow the procedure. So this is just the two phases then, one and two here?
Well, I don't know if there's any, there was, the only thing I heard in the meeting was that they planned to do all this stuff, I say, in the southern part. There was questions of housing that was up above would be a future phase that they didn't feel because it was in, not in our jurisdiction as well as Lake Ladder Housing and some of them. That was still shown in the overall master concept plan, the same. But this is the part we're focusing on right now as far as to say the current phase. They did identify an overall master, but to say, look, there's other things that are up here that may be in future phases. This was all identified as a current phase.
And the last quick question. So there's a, there's a CDA that exists there now, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, I don't know if this is what Councilor Cameron was getting to, but what, maybe not. There's a bit where I, where I thought he was going at one point, maybe went slightly different. So under the current CDA, what is not, what are they not able to do? Because like, when I look at this picture, it's hard to look at the picture just given the resolution and the size. But I know they can do the resort. But what, if council were to turn this down, just theoretically, what could they continue to do or not? Could they continue to build the golf courses shown on this map or not?
No, they have to have a plan for the CDA. So unfortunately, like I say, when we, because of the uses that were proposed at the time, so part of that property was zoned, I can show you the zoning map here. Part of it was C2, part of it was R4, part of it was R1. And then when we were doing a review, staff did a review, the, in speaking with the developer at that time or the property owners at that time, they still weren't sure what they were, they didn't have confirmed plans. So they, they had added the restaurant over the years, they added another wing over the years, but they still didn't have firm plans on what they were doing with the remainder. So there was a talk of a daycare at one time. So that, that is not in their plan. So when you do a CDA, you have the zoning piece, but those, that piece lays out the CDA plan, which is basically the amendments we're proposing. So it tells you what the uses are, what standards they follow, all of those things. So with this, I'll say mismatch of zoning in this area, it was seen by planning staff to change that to CDA. So it's zoned CDA, but anytime you do any development within a CDA, you have to have a CDA plan approved by council.
So staff changed that zone into a CDA?
Yes.
Previous?
Yep, in 2018 review.
I don't know, I don't know if staff could change the zone in without council approval.
It would have been brought forward by staff and it would have been changed in 2018 whenever the review was done. It wouldn't have been just a.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't here in 2018. I don't know the particulars.
So I guess maybe it was proposed by the staff as well as developer as one of the changes that would have happened in the 2018 review. But the ultimate change, yes, would have been done by mayor and council.
Okay. But then, but there was no plan attached to it?
No detailed plan, correct. That's why this would have been a CDA at the time saying, okay, whenever they're ready to have concrete, no pun, I guess, firm up their plans, come forward with the CDA, which is what we're doing now as far as the plan.
So 2018, that's when they started to firm up the plans?
I wouldn't say because we had different options. I'm saying in 2018, it was going to be, okay, we don't have the firm detail, a lot of flexibility for them to come forward, which they're doing now, to say, anything in that, those colors all went to brown, a CDA saying, okay, bring forward a firmer plan when you're ready to proceed, which is where we're at today.
Okay, so since 2018, they've had the opportunity to come forward and bring forward a firmer plan for the whole area?
I'd say yes. That's when the zoning changed.
It's taken seven years to get the plan to council.
I think in fairness, that the property owner may have thought, because it was zoned CDA, probably the same as a lot of councils and even staff, we had thought that the CDA area was approved and that basically you could do what you want in the CDA, whatever you proposed. It was only once we read in further into the bylaw and the last review that was done, that the plan has to be approved by council for any existing CDA. There wasn't one at that time. So that's what is before you now.
May I interject? Okay, so I'm just thinking back, 2018. I'm thinking of different councils that have come through. And so I believe that there were questions at that time. That councillor, council members had questions at that time. And we did a number of tours and had questions on site. And I think where we are from, say, 2018 to now, I just, I really believe this, and I say this sincerely, it's not that we don't like the development and to see business and to see those things happen. But I do think that, you know, if you went into a bank, you have to have a plan, you have to lay it out, you have to have some deadlines. And that's all I think we're trying to ask is, you know, when is there going to be the startup and the finish of some of the things that were proposed since 2005? And I, and I'm sorry if that's coming across in a negative way, but, you know, we have to answer to our residents as well.
I guess I'll just recap that we're just, the process we're doing is land use. So right now, we're just today doing, here's what the proposed land uses were in 2018, was thought, okay, there's a, you can come forward with a development. And part of the process, as staff said, when we found it, we're dealing with the land use as far as, here's what's proposed to happen. They're forward with a proposal. And that's, that's why we're here dealing with the, I'll say, primarily a land use before us at planning board.
It'd be really helpful to look back at the minutes even from previous discussions. I know those weren't included in the package, but, and I wasn't aware of any of this background information. So again, it's, yeah. Yeah, puts us into, I came into this meeting thinking that there was an existing CDA because that's how it zoned and that there would have been, like a CDA again is a little different than just, than just a zone, than just a land use because you're looking at specific, you can get right into the details on a CDA. You can look at what the buildings are supposed to look like. You can look at the whole thing. That's kind of the idea between, as I understand it, of a CDA is to be innovative and creative and create, give different opportunities. Otherwise, you could just zone it however you want to zone it. But I, yeah, I had no idea that this was, I didn't know there wasn't a plan attached to the CDA, I guess. I was kind of looking today because we have the one for the east-west, but anyhow.
All right. I'll just sort of move on or hopefully kind of, kind of close this off just by saying, and by the way, June, I think, 3rd is the next meeting where council will decide on this. There'll be a special council meeting, I guess, preceding our regular committee of the whole meeting that night. Just a point of observation, I guess, it's one of the, one of the unfortunate negative aspects, I think, of this property or projects is that the progress or lack of, I guess, is typically reported to the public by word of mouth and not directly from the developer or the owner. You know, you might have somebody that says out in the community, hey, I know somebody that works for Carney Briggs who works for whoever, and hey, they say it's not going to be done for. So it would be nice if there was some communication from the developer. I think that would go a long way of how the public sort of perceives the progress and the, of the project, whether that's through social media or. and the, of the project, whether that's through social media or whatever, it's just, it's, it seems, it seems to be very quiet on, on the end of the developer, and you have to rely on just things that you hear in the community in order to decide whether or not you believe whether this is happening or not, and it's just, I think it would go a long way if there was some sort of public communication from someone. But anyway, that's just sort of an observation, and I think everyone in the city I think would hopefully agree with that. But for tonight, like you said, Aaron, this is before the planning board and it is for land use, and I will just remind everyone that this will be June third before council, and the motion to bring forward to council was moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Adams. And all members of Planning Board in favor, say aye, aye? Opposed? So three, four, and one against. So this, whether or not that was four, nothing, or zero, four, it still goes to council for final decision on June third. So with that, I will hand it back over to Mayor Dan, and we will continue.
Counsel, I think there's one more item there.
There is, yeah.
Item three, yep, so I'll pass it right back to you for item three, two seventy-two All-Weather Highway, and then I'll just take a quick note, I know we have members of junior mayor and council here. And so we'll be getting to you pretty quickly, I think, yeah, it'll probably be like, I don't want to prejudge how long this conversation will be, but it probably should be five minutes and we'll be at it.
In comparison, relatively mild.
Quicker, yeah, over to you, Counselor.
So this is for a mobile sales establishment application for two seventy-two All-Weather Highway. The purpose of the application is to allow a mobile sales establishment, I hope I pronounced this right, syrup spot, or syrup spot, to operate at two seventy-two All-Weather Highway. Background, the city has received an application from Maria Hernandez requesting approval to allow a mobile sales establishment, syrup spot, to op, to operate at two seventy-two All-Weather Highway, PID number one zero eight one five two zero, weather permitting. Maria Hernandez's proposed hours of operation are eleven AM to seven o'clock PM, Monday through Sunday. Mobile sales establishment means a business located in a motorized vehicle or movable structure that is towed or moved by a motorized vehicle and where all of the goods, wares, or foodstuffs that are offered for sale are contained entirely within the motorized vehicle or movable structure, but does not include a lunch truck. The report, under section three of the City of Summerside Licensing Bylaw, CS twenty-one, the bylaw states the following, and mobile sales establishment is in section thirteen. A, any person or company seeking a license to operate a mobile sales establishment in the city shall make application therefore to the council. B, licenses may be granted for a mobile sales establishment to conduct business on a maximum of two locations in the city, and each application shall be accompanied by a letter of permission from the owner or owners of the property on which the mobile sales establishment will be located. C, council shall allow or refuse the application based upon considerations of safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. D, council may attach terms and conditions to the approval of the license if granted, including but not limited to hours and days of operation, health code requirements, litter control, or approved locations. E, the license for a mobile sales establishment shall be valid for the calendar year in which the application is made only. A new application is required to council for each calendar year. F, no appeal shall lie from a decision of council respecting a mobile sales establishment license. And staff comments, Ms. Hernandez has obtained a written letter of permission from the property owner, Highcroft Farms, Inc. So this will be on the Compton Fire Market property. Recommendation, staff support the city granting a mobile sales establishment license to the applicant, Maria Hernandez, as this property is zoned agricultural with a restricted use approval for a retail store. The Planning Board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. Planning Board recommendation, the application from Maria Hernandez to allow a mobile sales establishment, syrup spot, to operate at two seventy-two All-Weather Highway, be recommended to be approved by council, moved by myself, and I would ask for a second from Planning Board, Counselor Trenton. Any questions or comments, Counselor Adams?
So it's not a food truck? Or what, what is it?
It could be, as long as it's not a lunch truck.
It's a food truck.
What's the difference between a food truck and a lunch truck?
Yeah.
A lunch truck is a truck that goes around selling wares all across the city or wherever.
Food truck is... Oh, it's not in one spot? So do we know what, we don't know what kind of food it is? Like, there's no information or anything on the, I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the menu is.
Syrup, if, a quick Google, is Filipino-Canadian related, so maybe that's the answer, maybe it isn't.
And we didn't, it wasn't somewhere else before, was it?
No. Yeah, so if there's nothing further, all members of Planning Board in favor, say aye, aye? Opposed? Hearing none? So that will go also to the special council meeting on, oh, that's later tonight, so that's gonna be a quick one, okay. Your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Duran and Planning Board. With that, we'll adjourn our Planning Board meeting, and we will begin our monthly meeting. Counsel, okay to continue as we're going? Okay, so we will call the order, our monthly meeting of the City of Summerside City Council here for May twenty, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll move into our order of business. I will call this meeting to order here now at six forty-six PM. I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented from a member of council. Counselor Adams, second, Counselor Cameron, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. Conflict of interest declaration, any member of council have a conflict of interest with respect to any item on the agenda? There being, not much, so there are none. For members of the gallery who are here today, we begin each one of our public meetings here with a land acknowledgement. We had a first meeting, so we did that at the beginning, so we're not gonna do it twice, but if you were curious. At this point, we will move into item three, which is our minutes, and I'll look for a motion to approve the following minutes, I try and group these together. The minutes of the in-camera meeting, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the meeting minutes of the monthly council meeting of April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the meeting minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the meeting minutes of the special council of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. A move by Counselor McCollman, second. Counselor Cameron wins, and all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed changes or revisions? Hearing none, the minutes are formally adopted. The next will be just for members of Planning Board, a call for a motion to approve the Planning Board minutes of April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Member of Planning Board, Counselor Adams, move, second, Counselor Duran. Counselor Trenton lost the, to Counselor Duran, but I'll call for, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are also adopted by Planning Board, thank you. At this point, accolades and recognitions, this is the opportunity for members of council to speak to any accolades or recognitions in the community in the last couple of weeks. Seeing none, we're gonna take it, we're going right along, folks, this is gonna be great. Item five, public presentations, petitions, and delegations, five A is junior mayor and council report. So welcome to our junior mayor and council who are back. And... There we go, so just the mayor providing the report, or mayor and council, but I can call up, yeah, not here. Representative of municipal, Anna Nwenna, death in the family, so he is unable to join council, this is McCollman. And junior counselor Sam McKinnon, representative, no, no Sam, okay. And junior counselor Zayjon Akusa, representative for community services and tourism, that's Counselor Trenton's seat over there. And junior counselor Nixon Arseno, nope, okay. And carry it from here, I will leave the mic on for you.
Thank you, your worship, deputy mayor, and all the esteemed council members for having me and the junior council back here today. I'm here with a few suggestions and proposals that will hopefully transform our city into one that more emphasizes in creating opportunities and fostering a stronger sense of belonging and community, and just improving overall familiarity with our citizens. By implementing these ideas, Summerside can position itself as an attractive city for current and future generations. The first thing I'd like to look at is the sidewalks. They're a key component for safety for everyone in Summerside. Take for example, LaFergie Avenue. Almost every time I drive by LaFergie, I notice pedestrians, and on more than one occasion, that pedestrian has had their head buried in their phone, a car just comes by and hopefully they honk. But if they don't, it would not be a pretty sight, and with the lack of sidewalks and that new apartment building coming up, it would be most satisfactory to have a new sidewalk there, to prevent injuries in the future and present. Another key suggestion from the rest of the student council was more opportunities for volunteering. I myself believe in the immense value of engaging in volunteer activities, which not only benefit the community, but also provide young people with essential life skills and experiences. Volunteering allows citizens of Summerside, be them any age, to explore new opportunities, connect with others, and develop a deeper sense of community, of deeper sense of connection to their city. By encouraging youth to volunteer, the city can create opportunities for young people to work on meaningful projects, develop transferable skills, and cultivate a greater appreciation for our hometown. Programs that partner, partner with schools, community organizations, and local businesses could enhance these efforts and provide a structured pathway for youth involvement. Another thing I'd like to look at is during the summer, many kids find themselves bored inside their houses, which is not terribly wrong, but anyways. Places like, for example, the library can be incredibly beneficial in bringing Summerside's children and teenagers together. The lack of or under recognition of these excellent places can really inhibit the expression of people in all walks of life, as well as stop them from coming together as easily. Indoor spaces such as community centers, cooking hubs, and creative studios, as well as cafes, could serve as social and recreational hotspots for young people and people of all ages. These places would not only provide a safe environment for relaxation and socialization, but also support hobbies, interests, and talent development. Creating these indoor venues could even bridge gaps between culture, ethnicity, and as well, as well as foster a sense of inclusivity and camaraderie. Another practical suggestion is to focus on improving basic city operations, such as better road maintenance during the winter. In the first couple of weeks back from the winter holidays, we had quite a few hour delays and several cancellations. This could also pose, this could pose a significant concern for parents who are planning to go to work but can't leave their children home by themselves. More or less easy solution to this would be extra salting on the roads to prevent the slipperiness and, and help kids get to school. A call for more local and diverse dining options is another venture I would consider worthwhile. Our younger generation express a desire for new restaurants and cafes that could serve as enjoyable spaces for commu, for families and friends to gather. Currently, the limited variety of prominent food establishments, establishments in Summerside makes it challenging for residents to find intricate places to dine and socialize. By introducing a wider range of dining options, the city could attract both residential, residents and visitors, creating opportunities for social interaction and boosting the, the local economy. Restaurants with unique themes or menus could further enhance Summerside's reputation as a lively and engaging city. The suggestions outlined by local youth are highly practical yet impactful ways to make Summerside a better place to live. From initiatives like improving basic city operations to expanding recreational facilities, these ideas reflect the aspirations and wants as well as needs of the younger generation. Creating more opportunities for youth engagement, better, developing better infrastructure, and enhancing these areas can further transform Summerside into a city that not only retains its you, you, young population, but also attracts new residents and visitors. If implemented, these changes would build a stronger sense of community, foster pride in the city, and ensure its vibrancy for the years to come. By prioritizing these actionable, actionable ideas, Summerside has the potential to grow into an even more thriving, inclusive, and welcoming place for everyone. That's it.
That's great, and maybe if council's interested, we'd think about putting those five items on at the future committee of the whole meeting and see if there are any that we can, look, your light's already on.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that the first item that came up was something that I did suggest for a budgeted item for this year, a sidewalk on LaFergie, so I am in line with the youth, and they would like to see that as well. So keep that in mind for budget next year.
Yeah, no, there's lots of good stuff here, so maybe we can do that, we can put it on, and then see what we can do, and is again, one of the hopes I think we had all had is to be able to, be able to show some of the younger people in our community as well, that this is an important point, process and voice, and it can lead to good outcomes. Great. Now we get to welcome up our fire chief, Chief Ron, for a fire services department overview. This is a continuation of the series of departmental overviews that we've been going through for the past couple of months, we've done a number, and now we're onto fire services. So over to you, chief.
There we go. Thanks to mayor and council for this opportunity to present fire services. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ron Enman, fire chief for City of Summerside, and enter. Summerside Fire was established in eighteen sixty-three, that's a hundred and sixty-two years of service. Were comprised of two fire stations and sixty firefighters. We have forty members at station one and twenty at station two. We operate with six fire apparatus and off-road four-by-four water rescue unit, utility van, and half-ton, and then all the miscellaneous equipment that goes with those units. We also provide emergency services to Linkletter and Sherbrooke. There's a note there, station one to be, be replaced pretty soon. Our mission statement is to protect life, property, and the environment from fire and natural or man-made emergencies. Fire response is our primary function, but we are trained and prepared to, ready, and ready to respond to a wide variety of other emergencies. Our vision statement is to, our accomplishments are based on our commitment to protect the lives and property to all the persons within our community and to convey this commitment in a professional manner. We support education, training, and skilled We support education, training, and skill development and intend to use these opportunities to further enhance the quality of life of our residents, our citizens, and visitors. What we do, our emergency services include structure fires, medical first responder calls, car accidents, ice rescue, confined space, high angle, and basically any service that's requested. In twenty twenty-four, our firefighters attended four hundred and five emergency calls. Our attendance rate at the calls were ninety-four percent, which is a staggering number. It's great. Uh, we completed four thousand one hundred and two training hours and were involved in over two thousand community engagement hours. Since taking over the department in twenty nineteen, my main focus has been on embracing change, firefighter safety. That includes our personal protective equipment, SCBA, our decontamination protocols, and keeping our equipment to meet NFPA standards. Standard operating guidelines was a big one for us, and that includes everything from the timer pagers go off until the members return safely at home and anything that could arise in between there. So it's just a guideline for them to follow. And another big part is mental health wellness. And I think we have Corey here with us and uh that program is is amazing. It's uh not only beneficial to the to the membership, but uh in many situations that we respond, he definitely provides a comfort to that group. Firefighters in our community, uh some of the things that we're involved in is the MD boot drive. I think we raised over six thousand dollars this year. Coldest night of the year, our lunch and learn program that we started eighteen years ago. Santa Claus Parade that raises ten thousand dollars to the community and we give it back out to three community groups who provide food baskets and and different things. We support all the school breakfast programs, Touch a Truck, Fire Hall Tours, that's weekly, Lobster Carnival Parade, Maritime Fire Chiefs Conference. They were here last year. They were so impressed with the facilities and different things. They're they're back this year. And I wouldn't doubt it if they're back next year, but anyways, that's. And then we host many other things. The Fire Fit Challenge was a national event that we hosted a couple of years ago. And it's uh not only is a great involvement in the community, but uh I think that ties back to the Maritime Fire Chiefs, the support they got uh from the staff at uh Cray Union Place was just unheard of. They couldn't believe it. So hats off to them as well. Thank you. And if there's any questions, try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ron. I just, when you go back to the medical first responder, so you guys respond sometimes before an ambulance or so on. What like what? What would you say the percentage of your calls are like? Do you have?
It's around twenty twenty percent. Last year was seventy-seven calls we went to.
Right, okay.
And so this time last year, uh we were at thirty-three calls so far, and this year we're at thirty-seven. So we're we're on pace to outdo our numbers last year.
Which is, it's un- it's unfortunate to have to have the call to begin with, like it's, but it's it's unfortunate that the that the provincial part isn't there to support that, but.
There is talks underway through the the P E I Firefighters Association. It's not only Summerside, it's it's right across the province, but and some of the rural areas. I mean, they're on scenes for hours, so.
Yep.
Definitely something that's being looked at and uh we did meet, uh we had a presentation at the legislature. There was three of us there and I think things might be moving forward.
Good.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask in your observation as chief since two thousand nineteen, what would you see as being, you know, some of the, like the the biggest changes over this past number of years? Like is it the calls for, you know, uh health calls or is it um?
I think our call volume just going up just with, you know, like the 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 city's growing year after year. And the more people, of course, there's going to be more calls and uh there's more cars on the road and
Okay.
and I think we're getting older.
Yeah.
So there's more calls for service, but overall, it's just a steady increase. I think our percentage since amalgamation, and that's thirty years ago, it's it's up fifty-three, fifty-four percent. Just kind of coincides with the growth of the city.
And and the part B to that question, Chief Ron, is um I find that there's such a a real camaraderie with all of the members. And I just, what do you consider makes that happen? Is it the teamwork? Is it the support for one another? Like what do you think it makes them really stay with it? Cause they really give a lot to the city.
Yeah, it it it's an amazing group, really. It really is. Uh, we've got an op- we've got a young department now and uh just uh there's just a good mix of young and old and uh we're we're together a lot. So, you know, the more things that you're involved in with the community just kind of ties that camaraderie together. So it's it's a good mix. It's a good group.
It's a great job.
Yeah.
Just do a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, not so much. I do have one question, actually. What's a high angle rescue?
Uh, we we had a call a few years ago, I guess, I'm not sure, probably seven or eight years ago. There was a a guy on top of the water tower on Central Street. And uh he had surgery about six months before and he lost the feeling in one of his arms. So anything to do with with the height, somebody that's elevated with high, you know?
Okay.
It could involve the ladder truck, but in this case, uh we had to scale the side of the building and yeah.
Okay. I I mean, that just kind of came up when I saw that, but I mostly just want to say like, thank you so much for the job that you guys do, everyone at the department. I think that it's a lot like police services that every day, you know, you put yourself in potential harms way for the betterment of other people. Uh, and I don't think that you guys can have enough thank yous. So I want to say thank you and very much looking forward to a new Station One.
Yeah.
That's great. Uh, I think we all echo Counselor Cameron's comments and uh hope you have a great night. Thanks, Chief Ron. Thanks, Corey, for all you do and um keep it up.
Thank you.
Uh, that would move to appointment to committees. No appointments tonight, so I move to item seven, which is the introduction of reading of bylaws and resolutions. This is Counselor Ron. Back to you for resolution.
Great, okay. Uh, yeah, resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six one. Whereas Maria Hernandez is requesting council approval in accordance with section thirteen of the licensing bylaw CS twenty-one to operate a mobile sales establishment, Serap Spot, at two seventy-two All Weather Highway. Uh, property owner is Highcroft Farms Incorporated. And whereas section thirteen of the licensing bylaw provides that council shall allow or refuse an application based on the following considerations: uh, safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. Be it resolved that council grant approval to Maria Hernandez to operate a mobile sales establishment, Serap Spot, at two seventy-two All Weather Highway, Highcroft Farms, Inc., property owner. The license is subject to the following conditions: paying a license fee of five hundred dollars for a local business as per licensing bylaw CS twenty-one regulations, a food health permit is approved by the province, litter disposal containers are provided on site, hours and days of operation are eleven AM to seven PM daily, uh, letter or letters of permission from property owner or owners for the proposed location, and connection of any pipe, hose, et cetera, to the city system requires city approval. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, moved by myself and I would ask for a member of council to second. Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Counselor Ron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six one, moved by Counselor Ron, second by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? There are no, none opposed. The ayes have it. The resolution is carried. Thank you, counselor. That's that. Item eight, department reports. Um, somehow I'm at the start. That's why I had to run out. I had to grab my quick notes. Um, okay, we'll get started. Uh, quick question. So I think Counselor Morrison, you're covering for Counselor McDougal. I don't know if um Counselor Snow spoke to anyone, Counselor Adams. Okay. All right. Um, I think a couple of meetings ago, I'd uh mentioned that I'd give a quick update for sort of key meetings and events activities here as mayor in the last month. And so I'll put together a quick list here. Again, these are items just to to flag uh for uh council and um obviously further discussion on lots of these, but uh quick updates as well. We, myself and the C A O met with the deputy minister on the matter of S R D C. Um, again, as we had a call a couple of weeks ago. Um, so that is in anticipation of bringing something forward to council, that package that we've gotten from the province. Uh, at the same time, we'll have economic development um lead that discussion as to what um what role S R D C could play here in Summerside and where we want to go is if we want to be part of that or not. Um, so it's a quick update. That continues to move along because it had come up before. Um, we also had a meeting recently with the um P E I Bio Alliance and Chair of STEAM um on two items. One, discussions around the clean tech cluster, um, trying to get a better fit or feel for what um that clean tech cluster strategy is to look like. Um, the um individual who's leading that uh gave us a an update. Um, and then we also discussed the ongoing work that STEAM P E I has been doing on the possible science center somewhere in P E I. Um, as I understand, they are going to be um not back to the drawing board, but they're sort of taking a step back and um going to be doing some revisions to the work they've been done before they move forward um with something in a public manner. Um, so we'll wait that and we'll see where that goes. Um, we had the F P I M monthly meeting. Uh, there was some, three items on that were of value to share with council especially. Um, none of them will come as a surprise. Um, there was the significant discussion around the Lance, recent Lance Protection Act proposed amendments to the L P A, um, which would give um cabinet approval for the purchase of all parcels uh under one acre in municipalities um with official plans. So that would be Summerside. So um there was certainly quite a lot of discussion at F P I M around that. Um, I don't want to summarize for all of F P I M, but I don't think there was anyone who spoke in favor of that. And I think we've submitted uh public comments to the province as have Charlestown and others. Um, the M G A review also came up at F P I M. We also met with the province um as well as I think Counselor McDougal was there. Trying to remember who else, um, giving feedback as part of their M G A review that the province is conducting. Um, they are collecting general feedback. We have written submissions as well, so perhaps C A O can distribute those to council um as well. They came from staff in terms of uh if there were any housekeeping or functional items in the M G A that um we thought weren't necessarily working well for us. One of the themes though that did come up, and this came up both at F P I M and in our meeting, was that um the M G A, uh for the most part, works quite well for um us in Summerside in terms of we're able to manage it and keep up with our requirements. I know other smaller municipalities in P E I are struggling um with some of the workload associated with the M G A. So um we wanted to make clear that, you know, um, and we did request, at least to the individual who was here from the province or the consultant that the province hired, was collecting the information. We did request that perhaps the comments of the larger municipalities could be separated um from the rest because certainly there would be comments that would be made by smaller municipalities, which would have no bearing on us and vice versa. I'm not sure if they'll do that or not. I just wanted to flag that. Um, the other, there was a discussion at the F P I M meeting about the municipal infrastructure fund. It is an infrastructure fund that has been available for municipalities, but not the large, larger municipalities, Summerside, Charlestown, Cornwall, and Stratford. That fund hasn't um had a huge uptake, um so F P I M has been um trying to um get approval from the province to be able to expand that uh funding program to other municipalities that are currently prohibited from it. So that would be us included. We'll see where that goes. Um, a couple of other quick ones here. We have the meeting with the college and the theater and signed their contribution agreement. They are working on a project together. I forget what it was. They were sort of teasing out, but they didn't have uh particulars worked out, but.
Youth festival?
Yeah, some sort of youth, uh some youth theater music festival type thing, um, which sounds exciting. And they were all really pumped and excited to be working together, so. Um, and uh they had just recently worked some difference out. I forget what it was, but they came in and they had sorted something out amongst themselves and were quite proud. So that was great. Um, and then the other was just that I thought flagging for council. I probably sent it around, but um uh, Public School Board had uh is conducting, doing research and work on school needs assessments in P E I. They did the Three Oaks Group of Schools. Um, and that report has been made public. So if you haven't seen it, it's worth taking a look at. Um, there was a public open house as well, presenting some of the findings from that and the recommendations that may go to the P S B. Um, to summarize the report, all the schools in Summerside are at capacity. There is need for a new school in Summerside. Um, and in the report, it does identify the East West Corridor as an ideal spot for a new school. Um, but ultimately, that's outside our control, um, but it's certainly something worth reading. And um if you are in agreement with some of the facts that are presented there, or at least the data that's presented there in terms of the um school capacity here in P E I, certainly encourage everyone to uh reach out to their provincial counterparts to look, to find out if that's something that uh they will look to move forward with. Um, last, a couple of the big things for the past month, the State of the City took a ton of work and effort. Great job by everyone. I think it went over quite well. Uh, we also hosted the F P I M A G M. Um, had great discussions on climate, land use, and artificial intelligence. Um, and a couple of little media pieces that I noted here, did the Lex, did the Let's Talk with Paul Lem again following that, as well as the Compass Bot following the um State of the City and sat on a national panel on, for the Climate Caucus Canada um with David Miller, who was the chair, which was interesting because he's the chair of the C forty group of global cities making, advancing uh policies to fight climate change. And uh C forty is for big cities, but they're really impressed with Summerside. So whenever we can get out to speak about Summerside, outside of Summerside, I think it's uh can be really valuable. So that's a quick summary. Maybe I went on too long, but I did it orderly and didn't write it down to save some time. Um, with that, I'll pass over to, unless there's any questions? Ask anytime. Door's always open. Um, to Counselor Morrison, who's going to present the finance report for Counselor McDougal.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening to the residents and businesses of City of Summerside and my colleagues on city council. We are preparing for our external auditors, Don Grant Thornton, to come on site for our annual audit. Our preliminary results project a small deficit for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five relating to our electric utility. We will begin reporting twenty twenty-five, twenty-six year-to-date results, starting with our June monthly report. Per section one seventy-five, one of the municipal government act, the the municipality shall provide the government of P E I a copy of our audited financial statement and auditor's report no later than October fifteenth. The status of our utility counts receivable as of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is as follows. Total overdue balance is two hundred and six thousand four hundred compared to two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred at April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Approximately eleven point five percent or twenty-six thousand seven hundred of the overdue balance is greater than sixty days past due. And this compares to thirteen point seven percent or thirty-seven thousand three hundred as of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Disconnections for non-payment are occurring and we are seeing our balances greater than sixty days past due starting to decrease. We strongly encourage customers who have outstanding utility balances that are greater than sixty days to address their overdue balances. The table of The table attached to this report shows overdue balance totals for the last six months compared to the same six-month period in 2024. Over the next number of months, the Finance Committee will be focusing on a debt service policy and capital planning. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report and either myself or the Director of Financial Services are available to take your questions. And I'd like to thank Director Kristen Dunstford for this report.
Thank you councillor Morrison. Move to Community Services and Tourism Representative councillor Trenton. Councillor.
Thank you. Summerside Dome and Sports Fields, as we approach the final weeks of the regularly scheduled user group activities at the Dome. Planning is well underway for the upcoming fall season. The past month has seen high volume of birthday party bookings. Looking ahead to the summer, Dome is scheduled to host Boys and Girls Club as well as the Nasty Hockey Camps alongside various occasional bookings. And of course, meanwhile, the summer is coming around, so outdoor facilities are now open for the season and user groups have commenced practices and tryouts. And we anticipate another busy and successful season at both turf fields and ball fields. Active Living Summerside, the division has recently concluded another successful season of PD Day camps and is now preparing for a busy and exciting summer. A new member has joined the team, bringing fresh ideas and a renewed energy, energy to support the expansion of community activities. Preparations are well underway for the annual shipwreck run, run in June. And a partnership has been secured with a private vendor to operate a food sales, Legere Park Canteen, which I'm sure is getting pretty, hearing that's pretty exciting. Additionally, planning is in progress for a comprehensive summer schedule and programs to take place both at Legere Park and various locations across the city. For our Aquit, for our Confederation Bridge, Aquit, Aquit, they're not happening, again, speech therapy failure. The, the team has hosted a sensory swim, providing an inclusive swimming experience for individuals with sensory sensitivities. Spring swimming lessons are underway with 197 participants, AquaFit, 391 participants throughout the month. Spring swimming lessons begin April 5th and are progressing well. The Bronze Cross course also commenced on April 7th with eight, eight future guard assistants registered. Groups that utilize the center include Howland College, SIS and Bloomfield and TriPEI. As for SETS in April, the event hosting committee meetings continued for two major upcoming events. Noah Dobson's Hockey Fest, scheduled for June, and the 15 U Ray Carter Cup Baseball Nationals set to place, set to play, take place in August. Event development was a key throughout the month, with SETS staff traveling to meet with national sport organizations and event promoters, recognizing that relationship building and stakeholder engagement are essential in the industry. Additionally, SETS delivered a presentation at the joint council meeting, highlighting the benefits of co-hosting events with neighboring municipalities such as the city of Charlatown. Collaboration efforts also extended to working alongside the Department of Economic Development to explore opportunities for attracting businesses and job interest in Summerside. By leveraging, leveraging major events, SETS aims to engage with visitors, encouraging return visits and fostering potential business opportunities within the city. Just one final note on box office and ticket sales, everybody. April and May represent the busiest months here at the Veterans Convention Center. In April, the facility hosted 60 room bookings, while May continues with annual general meetings and spring training sessions for regular clientele. Notably, two conferences were secured through successful proposals, including the Red Oak Shrine Club, which held a planning conference April 11th to 13th in preparation for the Northeast Shrine Club's annual conference in September. Following a positive experience at Credit Union Place, organizers have revised their attendance projections from 150 to 200 to an expected 404.25. It's pretty impressive. This event will feature a parade and silly Olympics and is anticipated to be the highlight of the fall season. Additionally, April hosted the PII Jobs Fair and several conferences that utilized multiple areas of Credit Union Place, a trend that is becoming increasingly common. As for now, May has recorded 49 bookings with an additional reservations expected by month end. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trenton. We'll move to Government's HR Legal, representative councillor McCollman. Councillor.
Thank you, your worship, and good evening to all of my fellow council members. I'd like to thank director Kendra Young, Young, Gun, excuse me, for the Human Resources and Legal Services Report. Advertisements were posted for seasonal laborers with both public works and community services and staff assisted in the interviewing process. As a result of the upcoming retirement of Jean McKay from Culture Summerside, staff recently posted the position for the archivist position. The department assisted also with the goodbye celebrations for former chief Sinclair Walker and were farewell to chief. As well, the department led the process for the interviewing of applicants for the city's new chief of police. And a congratulations to chief Jason Blackear on a well-deserved promotion. Summerside Police Services and the city are in good hands and that was a national search. So I think we're, we're in good hands. Applicants for the new contract position of grant proposal specialist and policy writer were interviewed. Peggy Miles was hired into the role of assistant cultural programmer and a congratulations to Peggy from Mayor and Council. Cameron Glant was promoted to equipment operator with the Municipal Services Department and congratulations to Cameron. Staff have been busy onboarding the city's summer students and seasonal employees during this past month. As well, staff attended and supported the emergency measures operate organization tabletop exercise. Staff attended the Provincial Workers Compensation Board Safety Conference. As well, they attended the monthly Joint Operations Safety and Health Meeting with the CAO. Staff organized and led a tour and talk at City Hall for Connection to Employment Prosper West participants and assisted with a tour from Study and Stay who visited our Sun Bank project. Staff also organized a bake sale to support the PII Humane Society, raising over $300. Staff organized and completed the application processes for summer students, funding with post-secondary summer student funding and jobs for youth, summer student funding. And these applications have resulted in successful funding of over $10,000 for at least two full-time student positions within the city. Staff liaised with the city's pension plan custodian and insurance company in response to questions from staff and pensioners and assisted with the processing of the workers' compensation board claims. Staff have been communicating with Blue Cross representatives to finalize the details of the new health and benefits plan and to develop a timeline for its implementation. The department continued working with various city departments and external legal counsel in support of the city's staffing, human resources needs and legal matters involving reviewing contracts, leases and supporting, sorry, supporting legal work involving civil claims on behalf of and against the city. In closing, there's just a couple of points. I just want to mention to my fellow councillors that on the June meeting notice coming up, council will be discussing at the committee of the whole meeting and revisiting the former summer schedule meetings for July and August. Due to the busyness of the season with so many summer external events that council participates in and engages with people on, plus staffing vacations. So we want to discuss that with council. Also, I just wanted to point out tonight, just to thank the Vulnerable Populations Committee or Community and some of the grants that have been given out. The checks are in the process and will be mailed out, but there have been organizations awarded 2,500 each so far under the Vulnerable Populations Grant. Hope House Incorporated for their meal prep courses for purchase of ingredients and supplies for day programs. Loaves and Fishes, which all connect with the community and do a big job to help us. Nourishment and Community Outreach, purchasing food ingredients for meals for delivery. Meals on Wheels Summerside Incorporated, and these are all nonprofit numbered organizations. They purchase and deliver for meals for senior citizens and isolated persons. St Mary's Anglican Church Water Bottle Filling Station located outside the church hall for people in need to be able to fill their water bottles. Also Summerside Wide Service Club, their weekly food boxes to feed the on-house community. And Trinity United Church provide food boxes, hot meals to shut-ins and breakfast on Saturdays. So just a big handout and a big thank you to all of these community organizations for the work that they do. And that concludes my report, your worship.
Thank you councillor McCollman. And with that, we'll move to representative Morrison for Communities, or Municipal Services.
Thank you, your worship. Highlights from Public Works Water and Sewer. The operation group is far along with the right-of-way repairs through the city. And by the end of next week, the hot asphalt patching of roadways will start. If there are any outstanding items of concern after May, please contact the Municipal Services Department at 902-432-1268 to identify the repairs needed. The crosswalk painting has begun for the yearly cycle, with the school zones getting priority at the start, then high-volume collector roads and finally the local areas. Center line painting will be starting the week of June 1st and finished by the end of June. Street sweeping, first pass of cleanup has been completed and will now continue a cycle for the rest of the summer into fall. Electric utility highlights. The open house for electric utility generation investment discussion in need is scheduled for June 6th, June, June 2nd, 2025, between the hours of 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The new service connections and upgrades for electrical service has tallied to 166 to the end of May 12th, 2025. At this time last year, it was 116, a large increase. The service load for Summerside electric customers has averaged an increase of 7% over the last five years, which would normally be in the range of 2%. Contractor and developer, developers are reminded to coordinate the electrical servicing need early with utility as work is scheduled out into the end of June at present. The work on Water Street East continues for the new electrical circuit and is expected to complete it by the end of September. Some traffic slowdowns can be expected over the next few months, which will be advertised on the city website and news feeds. I'd like to thank director Gray Quitty for that report.
Thank you councillor Morrison. And now call on representative for art, culture and diversity councillor Cameron. Councillor.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to thank director Laurie Ellis for this report, and there's a lot going on in Culture Summerside, so get ready. The Summerside Art Festival, the Wyatt Heritage Properties Inc. in partnership with Culture Summerside, has an exciting lineup of events and partners for the 2025 edition of the Summerside Arts Festival. The festival dates are May 31st to June 18th and include the following. An art battle at Evermore Brewing Co. on June 1st. Also, a creative community service, services of outreach art workshops. Magnetic interactive sculptures. An Art Smart Student Exhibition, Exhibition opening at Eptech Art and Culture Center. An Art Ally Edition with artist demos and musicians in partnership with Summerside Farmers Market. Painting in the garden of the Holman's Ice Cream Parlor. And Creative Kids Day with puppet making. Creative Kids Day also includes bucket drumming sponsored by Home Hardware and Make Your Space Sessions. The festival also includes a Lenny Glant new album launch concert at Harborfront Theatre. Workshops on basket making, plein air and abstract painting, live painting, a book launch. An art show by the Summerside Art Club, barbecue and art-making sessions at Hillcrest Park. The opening of a new rug hooking exhibit at LaFergie Cultural Center. Other partners and funders include Label Allianz, ArtBuds, Government of Canada, College of Piping, Creative PII. And you can find more information on the celebration at WyattHeritagePropertiesInc.com. The 2025 Lobster Carnival dates are July 10th, 11th and 12th, with the parade being on the 12th. Tickets for the Lobster and Coal Cut Suppers are now on sale through Summerside Lobster Carnival's online store. You can visit thesummersidelobstercarnival.ca to purchase. Also going with the Lobster Carnival, the Summerside Chrysler Dodge and Warren Ella's Family Amateur Country Music Singing Competition. That is a very long title, is back again with other carnival favorites for the 2025 edition. Those interested in registering for the parade, the cardboard boat races, lobster trap stacking competition or the biscuit and roll or trivia can do so at thesummersidelobstercarnival.ca. Registration for the country music singing competition will open soon and the carnival's schedule, the carnival's schedule to date is available online. And then we've got some more summer programming in addition to the Summerside Lobster Carnival. July programming includes the Diversity Festival, Pride Walk and Barbecue. And new this year is the Summerside Latino Festival. Additional Summerside programming includes the Old Fashioned Carnival, concerts in the garden, a full roster of museum tours at all of our heritage and cultural sites. And new this summer will be a kids' culture camp in August. There is more, but councillor, councillor McCollman said basically the rest of them in her thing, so I get to stop there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you councillor.
It was thank you for saving me extra words.
Thanks councillor Cameron. And I think Sanders Harvey has sent out meeting requests to everyone for all of the arts, Summerside Arts Festival. So all the events should be in folks' calendars. I don't know if it would be really helpful to just sort of have all of what's, maybe this already exists councillor, but if, like all the things that are happening and the dates are happening with Culture Summerside through the summer, it would be great to be able to like get that out because as you said, there is so much on the go. And great to get it out in the community. Councillor Duran, representative for Technical Services and trustee chair of planning and work councillor.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to director Aaron McDonald for compiling the report once again this month. Preparations for the 2025 construction season are well underway. City staff are actively preparing tenders aligned with the approved 2025 capital budget. Project design work continues and several tenders are expected to close throughout the spring. The first round of tenders, including, including paving, sidewalk, water main, sewer and storm main projects have all recently closed. The third tender for the east-west housing corridor project is also, it also closed in April. Construction on this corridor is set to resume in May, following a pause last fall. The first construction project is scheduled to begin on May 5th. The lights are up on the corner of Pope and Greenwood. We just got to finish twisting the bulbs in, I guess. Plug it in. As in previous years, staff will prepare and share a city map outlining the locations of planned capital projects. This map will be made available on the city's website and it'll be updated regularly as the season progresses. Building permit activity in April, the city issued 17 building permits with a combined value of approximately $4.17 million, bringing the year-to-date total to 44 permits and a value of $9.73 million. And the breakdown is two commercial permits, one for a change of use and one for an addition or alteration. One permit for an alteration, an institutional permit. And for residential, we have four semi-detached dwelling units, four additions or alterations, two decks and two secondary suites. We had one sign permit and one permit issued for a 46-unit apartment building. And as always, our team welcomes inquiries from both developers and residents. If you're planning a project for 2025, now is a great time to reach out to city staff for guidance and support. And just before I close off, I just did want to send out a couple of condolences. One to the friends and family of Kenny McLean, who was a familiar face at, at Walmart as a greeter there. If you didn't know Kenny, you, you knew Kenny. And he was a resident of Ward 2 and any time that he got in touch with me for, for anything, which wasn't often, but, but there was a few and he'd always be so accepting and, and understanding of any, any answer or, or response that I was able to give him. So just wanted to send out sympathies to him. Um so just wanted to send out sympathies to him and, or his family, his wife, and, and his two sons, I believe, and his uh, I think he had a couple of granddaughters, and I didn't know him super well personally, but had him on, you know, Facebook, and you could tell that his, his, his kids and his granddaughters were just his world, so uh big shout out to, to Kenny's family. And of course, to our colleague Bruce, who just lost his brother over the weekend. Condolences to him and Nancy and his, the rest of his family and their families, so um yeah, just wanted to end with that. And uh if that's, if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to uh receive them.
In all seriousness, though, what are, what is the holdup with the lights and Greenwood and?
I saw Hanson there over the weekend, yesterday, doing something in the box.
I just wondered if we had a?
Yeah, there's no holdup. This is the, this is a typical timeline for install. They're on schedule. Um city crews are there today powering them. Um there will be a period of time, um likely minimum a week where they'll be flashing yellow, uh because that's a frequently used corner by many, whether it's tech center employees or residents of the area, to prepare them for it. Industry specifications say, you know, sometimes it's 48 hours is sufficient. Uh tech services staff along with police services agree that the longer the better to prepare residents, so it'll be probably a seven-day window of flashing yellows once they're ready, and then they'll, away they go.
Okay, and I know we've had our own sort of internal communication about uh line painting and that sort of thing, but just, I've had a lot of people ask, since the lights went up, are we gonna do the, the lines there too? Um and I assume we will at some point, but can we just sort of let people know when that may take place?
If, if we were able to split our uh painting crew into multiples and, and get them going, we'd have them everywhere all at once. Um but yes, the plan will be to do those lines um as part of our typical schedule. Uh crews are doing crosswalks in school zones now, and they'll work their way through intersections. I don't want to be quoted here tonight saying that Pope Road of Greenwood is a priority one compared to others, but I believe it's outlined in the um, in the plan, and it may need to be updated now that there's lights there as well, so.
Yeah.
But it certainly will be part of the list.
Yeah, and I know, I don't know if it's new or not, but there is a sign there. Funny, I didn't notice it before if it was there, but it's, it's a little clearer now. I'm assuming that sign is new, but it sort of breaks down which lane is to turn and which one goes straight. Yeah, I feel like a fool if the sign's been there all along, but I don't remember seeing it, and it, it does provide a bit of clarity. Something I noticed over the last couple of weeks as well. Um so yeah, thanks, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh now we'll move on to Economic Development and Growth. Representative Deputy Mayor Snow and Counselor Adams.
Thank you, your worship. Um so for economic development, following is a brief update. Um it's been a very busy month of engagement. Strategy development and advancing investment files, following is a summary. Uh UPI, the Office, in collaboration with some of our Western PEI partners, are engaged with UPI to find ways to advance the creation of a clean tech center for commercialization. Summerside stands for Leadership Innovation and Action in Clean Tech. The city has built a reputation as a proven testing ground for clean technology solutions, combining bold sustainability commitments with real-world implementation. Our ambitions are to further establish a year-round engineering presence in Summerside to lead collaborative clean tech research, hands-on learning, and innovation powered by real municipal infrastructure and live data, and assist business in advancing innovation. We have recently launched a survey to Prince County Business to understand ways in which to help our local business better leverage the expertise and capacity of working more closely with the university and local partners. That sounds like something that, like, the EcoPark might be addressed it in. Throw that out there. Um client servicing, over the past month, activity has been strong across client servicing, investment discussions, labor support, and handling various business inquiries. The clients served has some 39. And some notable um factoids, year-to-date commercial building permits are 80% higher than 2024 year-to-date. Uh year-to-date Big Possibilities.ca um is up 19.3% from this time last year. And currently, there are 46 listings on the Available Sites Tool, including mostly space for lease, but also includes businesses for sale, buildings for sale, and vacant commercial lots. What is the Available Sites Tool? Just, I have no idea. Is anybody?
It's essentially a real estate tool for potential businesses wanting to open up in existing sites or lands or things of that nature.
Okay. Um and that's all for that. I don't know if anybody else has any questions. So Summerside Police Services. Uh April was another busy month with calls for service. Uh training our special tactical operations personnel uh were, they were on semi-annual training in Nova Scotia from April 7th to 11th. Um now, Chief Blackear and Sergeant Daly participated in city's EMO Tabletop Exercise on April 29th. Interviews were conducted for the next classes of our cadet recruitment program at the Atlantic Police Academy. Uh successful candidates were identified and have accepted the offers pending further testing requirements. And how many members, how many are we sending? Do you know JP? I'm not sure. Um I think we just sent a couple, right, I think, each time? On April 11th, six SPS members attended blanket ceremony at the Atlantic Police Academy. On April 17th, um Chief Blackear attended and presented at the Joint Council Meeting between Summerside and Charlotown at the Credit Union Place. Uh Chief Walker's retirement reception was held on May 2nd here at City Hall, and it was well-attended, and Chief Walker received a great send-off. And Chief Blackear officially took on his new role on May 6th. Um do we know when, I'm so asking all these questions, um do we know when the deputy chief will be advertised?
Uh not at this time, no. We're still kind of working through that process.
Okay, and do we have an acting?
No, not yet, no.
Um had fire services, summary of calls during the month, firefighters responded to 31 calls. Six were medical first responder calls, 24 were silent alarms, and one was a general alarm. Training, firefighters took part in 249 hours of training in March, such as safety officer course, mental health first aid training, and wildland fire training. Um the fire department attended a Critical Incident Stress Management Course in Brunel. Chief Edmund and Deputy Chief Blanchard attended an EMO table, tabletop exercise at City Hall. A huge thank you to all residents for the generosity. This year's Easter weekend boot drive raised an incredible 6,500 for Muscular Dystrophy Canada. And Summerside's support and kindness is truly inspiring. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Any further comments, questions, statements, issues? Goffs, we're good. Um all right, with that, we'll adjourn uh the meeting for tonight.